Good evening. I will call tonight's regular meeting of Town Council April ninth, twenty twenty four to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. Number four in our agenda tonight is proclamations and presentations of which we have none. Number five is public positions, communications, and public participation on any subject within the jurisdiction. The town town council with a two-minute limit. If you are in the audience today and you wish to speak, we'd ask you to come up. Give us your name and address. If you are online and you wish to speak, you can raise your zoom hand or press star nine, and we'll alternate between in-person and virtual. If anyone would like to start, you can come on up.
Good evening. Kathy Bach, two fifty-five Tallinn State Road here in Tallinn. I have a personal statement to give tonight. Forty-four years of integrity, forty-four years of elected, appointed, and volunteer service to Tallinn, forty-four years of respected service and training, forty-four years of ability to make big-picture decisions, forty-four years of ability to be objective, no matter what my personal beliefs. My ability to look at all sides of an issue, my ability to follow the federal and state statutes and guidelines, forty-four years of my ability to respect a property owner's major investment, my ability to be fair to all parties, my ability to compromise, forty-four years of service when others weren't willing to step up to serve, as my current commission seat reflects. Forty-four years of making the best decisions for the most people based on the rules or guidelines of the boards or commissions that I served, forty-four years that represent the support and, yes, the votes of Republicans and Democrats of Tallinn, the appointments of the Connecticut General Assembly leaders, both Republicans and Democrats, and the appointments of governors, both Republican and Democrat. So I ask you, what exactly are you looking for in a commissioner on the HDC? Especially one who wishes to continue to serve her community.
James. Good evening. Members of the town council, my name is James Simmer. I am the attorney for Ms. Kathleen Bach, and I am making the following statement on the record as her attorney. Member of the town council, item number eight point six on the agenda for tonight should be heard only in executive session. Furthermore, pursuant to section C five dash two of the Tallinn Town Charter, any commission member must receive a sufficient advanced written notice advising them of the reasons for the hearing to be that is proposed, and any commission member is entitled to a full and fair opportunity to be present at, heard at, and offer a full defense at a separate, private, due process hearing. Good evening. Thank you very much for your time.
In addition to my comments, I'm also leaving you a little bit of a dossier on what I've done in Tallinn since I've been here. I know you don't all know me. Thank you.
Online, we have Reenie B. Saw. We allow her to sit and talk. Is there anyone new, please?
Hello, Reenie B. Saw, two thirty, Grant Hill Road, Tallinn. I want to thank all of you for your time at the town council meetings and all the rest of the time that you spend on behalf of our town. In particular, I understand that budget season can be difficult because I've gone through it myself. So with that said, the last meeting was difficult to watch. The town council chair behaved in a way that was at a minimum disrespectful and disappointing, but overall unacceptable. The chair should be an example for others to follow, but in the most recent meeting, the chair was berating staff and other council members. It was an embarrassment to watch. To be disrespectful of our staff in public is a personnel issue that could be problematic for the town as a whole. The chair does not get to dictate what others are allowed to say or choose their vocabulary because they don't agree with it or like it. The chair should have at the forefront of their mind the town as a whole, not their own personal likes and agenda. I would like to encourage you to consider choosing a chair that can have collaboration, consideration, and the town as a whole as their primary goal. I don't think the current chair is capable of that based on the last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak? Come on up.
Sharon LeFant, one sixty-eight Wyegoro, two hours of Sharon and Smokey. This is handwritten. Hold on to your hats. May have a little bit of problem. I know Kathy Bach a little bit. I've lived in town for thirty years. She's lived in town a bit longer. She knows a lot about history. She knows a lot about the history of the historic district and about the history of the town. She knows a lot of people in town. She knows the rules and regulations of the historic district, the local historic district. She knows the state rules and regulations. She knows the federal rules and regulations. She knows a whole lot, and she knows a whole lot of people. And given the fact that she is fair and equitable to all who come before her as a commission, I can't think of any other reason why you would want to dismiss her. But that's what you intend to do. I mean, there isn't a town in this state that wouldn't love to have her. She's smart. She's a good woman. She's fair, and she knows what she's doing. She knows all the rules and regulations. And we've done a lot of chatting together in the Historical Society. She doesn't. She plays fair. She doesn't pick somebody out and not like them and vote against them for that. That's what she needs to do, and that's follow the rules. And if you don't know her like I do, I would suggest that you go into her records in the community, read about what she said, read about what she's done. She's been on a lot of boards and commissions. So if you don't know her, I wouldn't vote tonight anyway because you need to know her like I do. And you know that she can do her job, and she does it well. I've seen her, and I know what she does at the Historic Society. You couldn't ask for a better president.
Thank you.
So anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone online who would like to speak at this time? You can raise your zoom hand or press star nine. I've seen any hands. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak? Come on up.
Thank you. There's the eight hundred and sixty-nine Tallinn Stage Road. First of all, I got a little frustrated last meeting I was in. I apologize for that. But I think at the source of that frustration is just the fact that it just appears to me that the council, while they may have discussions in their executive sessions, tend as an individual around the dais that whenever something is talked, whenever anything comes up, it tends to be one member of the town council having a conversation with Mr. Foley about something, and you don't see a lot of input in what other people's views are, okay? Now, I realize from my past, not that I was ever involved in an elected position, what you're doing is a lot of work, okay? A lot of work, probably a lot more than any you would ever anticipated. And I realize that. At the same time, though, it's very important that the public who we believe you're serving have to hear what you think about all the issues that are out there, and in particular, at this point, especially about the historic commission. Okay? It's very important that the people hear that, not just in this room, but whoever listens in, whoever takes the time to look at the video or the sound of this meeting. So I just ask you again, from a standpoint of transparency, that you vocalize your thoughts and opinions as often as possible. They can be succinct. They don't have to take the three minutes or two minutes, whatever it is. But basically, it's important that we all understand what you think and why you think what you think. Fair enough? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak? Please feel free to raise your zoom hand or press star nine. Anyone else in the room would like to speak? Come on up.
Good evening. Jody Coleman Marciallo, Chair of the Tallinn Green Historic District Commission at seventy-nine Tallinn Green in the Historic District. Dear Town Council, when I joined the Historic District Commission back in two thousand nine, so that's fifteen years ago, I was honored by a call that I received from a town council member about becoming an alternate. Having purchased a historic property in nineteen ninety-nine within the Historic District, I felt it would be a good thing for me to volunteer in my town. I had lived there for already ten years. It's a good thing to get involved. Today, the heart of the Historic District back then and what still remains the same is the charge, which says, "It is the purpose of this chapter through the establishment herein of the Tallinn Green Historic District Commission to preserve and protect the distinctive characteristics and appearance of the Tallinn Green and of its buildings which surround it with the respect, respecting the rights and the wishes of those who own property within the district. It is the intent of this chapter that the requirements set forth herein be construed with these purposes in mind and be administered in common sense. Since then, the Historic District has done a lot. In two thousand ten, we sent a neighbor letter to Historic District residents and real estate agents and posted it on our website in an effort to inform people of specific guidelines, rules, and regulations that we have. In two thousand fifteen, we assisted in the Tallinn three-hundredth celebration by opening our private residence to house tours, where I personally had over two hundred people see the interior of my lovely historic property. For many years, we assisted, and I personally did, with the Tallinn Green Days, where third graders are assigned to play historic characters of the past and see what life was like during the eighteen hundreds, which is a wonderful educational opportunity. Then, in two thousand eighteen, we put Tallinn on the map by being awarded Connecticut State Scenic Road status. We are one of the only ones in all of Tallinn County. Then, again, in two thousand twenty, we asked for more information and resources. We posted on our website, including "The Green: An Endangered Asset" by Barbara Cook. And Mandy Maslow was our supporting staff at the time, and we had two other publications and information that we had that she very nicely put on our website. And that was in two thousand twenty. In two thousand twenty-one, we revised our neighbor letter and sent it out again to Historic District residents and real estate agents and posted it on our website, since we had a lot of new people buying historic properties in the green. We wanted to inform them about what's going on. And then in two thousand twenty-three, to assist, educate, provide information to residents and the public, we published our Tallinn Green Historic District Design Guidelines with the assistance of the State Historic Preservation Office, which we distributed and posted on our website as well. Today, we have fifteen informational resources, documents, and forms available to the public and residents on the town website, which I think you were posting. On March twenty-eighth of this year, I requested three more additional resources be posted on our website. One is regarding renewable energy. Another one was the National Park Service Guidelines and the State Historic Preservation Offices Handbook for Historic District Commissions, but the town has not put them there yet. I have had no response. I'm assuming they're refusing.
Thank you.
I'm not done. Sorry, one more page. And now I am here before you today due to misunderstandings and uninformed opinions about the Historic District Commission. Many people think that the brick house with the front-facing solar panels is part of the Historic District or near the green. That's the one down here. That's kind of at the top of the road when we come out from Crandall. But it's not. It is beyond the boundaries and really not close to the green. We must follow specific town code, the Connecticut State Statutes, and the Secretary of Interior Guidelines found on the National Park Services website. In passing upon appropriateness, which is what everybody applies for, it's called the Certificate of Appropriateness, it says appropriateness as to the exterior architectural features the commission shall also consider in addition to any other pertinent factors, the historical and architectural value and significance, architectural style, scale, general design, arrangement, texture, and material of the architectural feature involved in the relationship thereof to the exterior architectural style and pertinent features of other buildings and structures in the immediate neighborhood. I've received feedback that some people perceive me as rude, inappropriate, or out of line when we ask, discuss, or compare a COA applicant's electricity usage and inquire about energy efficiency measures one has taken. That is not my intention, to be rude and appropriate or out of line. According to the guidelines on connecticut dot C T and the Energy Efficiency for Historic Homes, it states these considerations should be the first step before a solar energy system is planned in an effort to reduce costs to the applicant and reduce the overwhelming visibility the modification will do to the historic property and the district as a whole, since visibility and visual inappropriateness is the greatest concern. So at the end of the day, I have only been doing my job as Chair of the Historic District Commission by protecting and preserving the distinctive characteristics and appearance of our three-hundred-year-old, nationally-registered historic green, which is recognized and made famous in Money and Time Magazine today.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak? You can raise your zoom hand or press star nine. Is there anyone else in the room who'd like to speak? Come on up.
Hi. My name is Dave Geisler. I live at thirty-eight Anderson Road in Tallinn. I suspect that a lot of this comes out of the resignations or asking for resignations because of the sidewalk. And if that's the case, I'm very disappointed. It's almost like national news is coming to Tallinn, where if you disagree with what we think, then we're going to remove you from this office. You know, kind of like what Donald Trump is doing with the Republican National Committee, where he's trying to get his own people on board. If that's our case, and I'm guessing that it is, this disagreement, you've got a lot of people that you're going to have to replace. The state of Connecticut said that the Tallinn Green was ADA acceptable. The Zoning and Planning Commission said that they totally disagreed and voted down to have a cement sidewalk on this town green. They asked for clarification from the town manager and also the council. They never received it. After they voted it down unanimously, that they said it was inappropriate to put a cement sidewalk on the green, they asked for alter other options. Do you have, excuse me, do you have other options? They never received any information. You'll have to also fire everybody on the committee that Jody and Kath you're on because they voted against this sidewalk. Going down the line, Historic District, I'm sorry, the Historical Society also said no to this. And these are the people that are running the museums. They run the courthouse for the Genealogy Society underneath it. They also run the Ben Homestead. I hope that you have gone to all of these individual places. If you haven't, you're missing something out. We also have the parade, the Celebration Committee that run the parade that also run the Halloween or the scarecrow contest on the green and take part in the what is it? The Tallinn Day. You'd have to get rid of them because they also said the sidewalk is inappropriate. In the farmer's market, the leadership there said it's inappropriate. Now, you have an option here as a new committee to reevaluate and look at, is that sidewalk advisable? Is it worth doing? Is it really going to be helpful to this community? And I also want to remind you that a lot of things have been said you can't do. There's a difference between I can't do it and I can't do it because I don't want to do it. And I think that part of our solutions here have come up with, I don't want to do it. The other thought I have is that you are in charge of this committee, I'm sorry, this town. Our town manager, he is supposed to act as you ask him to act, so you are in charge. And I hope that should reconsider the suit that is taking place here in Tallinn about the sidewalk, evaluate it, see how much it really is of value to the community. It's almost like oftentimes we give money Bangladesh. Excuse me. We see a film on Bangladesh that children starving. And so we say, oh, man, I want to give money. You give money, you go to bed at night feeling good about yourself. And then you find out that at the end, one dollar out of that hundred dollars you sent is actually being used by the people. So it's a great idea. I want to help everybody. The people that are opposed to the town green, I'm sorry, the sidewalk, are not hard, evil people. They just think that there are other options, and I would like our town manager to reevaluate. I'm sorry if I'm boring you. I would like our town manager and you to reevaluate and take a look, hard look at, are we really doing something that is going to be beneficial to this community, and are there other ways to do it?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's someone online labeled iPhone with their hand raised.
Hello, Elizabeth Costa, fifty-four, Josiah Lane. I just, I briefly looked at the agenda tonight, and I didn't actually see the discussion for the Tallinn Historic Commission. The gentleman that just spoke before me, I have incredible favor for for a long time. But he also knows my dad was in a wheelchair for a long time and wouldn't have been able to access the green as it is now. It would have taken myself or my mom or my sister to push him on the green. There are plenty of people that don't have access to a mechanical chair or electric chair that would be difficult to be on the green. That's not why I came to talk, but there are plenty of people of good favor that agree and disagree about the town green. We need to make it accessible to all. Relative to the Tallinn Historic Commission, I don't agree with Jody some of the time. I think she's improved, so congratulations to you, Jody, on that. I certainly don't agree with Mrs. Bach on most of the things she said, but I do believe that people deserve the opportunity to improve. And that means if Reenie B. Saw is going after Katie Murray, that she deserves an opportunity to improve. People deserve an opportunity to improve. And I think you just, you as a council should not remove anybody from the Tallinn Historic Commission. But I do believe they should know what their charge is and how to speak to people. I was just absolutely dumbfounded by Jody questioning Mr. Hughes about he could have, essentially saying he got it for the house for a song or got it for a cheap price or something. Anybody could have bought that house. I was incensed by that comment. But I do believe that Jody and Mrs. Bach and anybody on that council, commission, excuse me, deserve an opportunity to improve. Robert's rules are not something that everybody's just poor knowing. So I do believe that with counsel from you and some training, people deserve the opportunity to improve, and I would encourage you to maintain their positions on the council until such that they don't want to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who'd like to speak? Anyone else online? Sean Laffin.
Hello, Town Council. Sorry for the late arrival. Sean Laffin, one sixty-eight Mountain Spring Road. Just wanted to say that this week I was given some pleasant news in the past couple of weeks where there's going to be a new well drilled on my property in the near future in the hopes that this will rectify my water contamination issues. My hope is that this will complete my saga, but we'll see. I am thankful for Mike's communication from the town service. And my hope is that there won't be any further delays with the town insurance company because I'm very aware that they're the ones that are dictating this train and determining how long it takes to, this process to drag out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who'd like to speak? Online, it looks like we have S. Lucic.
Hi, yes, Susan Lucic Hughes, ninety-five Tallinn Green. I just want to address some of the things that were brought up tonight and try to correct some misconceptions, misinformation about the sidewalk. I'm sure that, you know, you as town council members are well aware, educated, informed of the situation on the green with accessibility, which I'll remind everyone just in terms of transparency, which I keep hearing. ADA compliance is a federal law. It's not about wanting to do it or not wanting to do it. Liz, before me, mentioned a family member. I have a family member in a wheelchair. Accessibility is needed, and it has been deemed important enough across the country and the world also to be made a law. Our green is not accessible and has never been. And as Chair of the Commission on People with Disabilities, we have been asking for over four years, close to five now, for accessibility on the green. The Department of Transportation, state highway reconstruction in no way, shape, or form makes the green ADA compliant or accessible. I challenge anyone in the room right now to take a wheelchair across the grass or try to drive it or push it along the existing sidewalks. I got an email from a resident this week telling me a story about how he tried to use the existing sidewalks in his wheelchair, and he got stuck. And he was stuck for a while until he could find someone to come get him and help him out. You, we all have seen a gentleman on the road in the dark in a wheelchair, regardless of what his, what he's doing or where he's going. He is a human being, a member of our community, a resident of this town, and he deserves respect. We all deserve respect. Everyone deserves respect and accessibility. And no one in this room has the right to determine who doesn't get accessibility. So I just want to put that out there for everyone. I feel very strongly about this. I think that, as Liz said, there's going to be disagreement, but bottom line is, we're all human beings. Disability rights are human rights. They're basic rights. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak? Anyone else online? In the room? Online. We will have a second option at the end of the meeting, okay?
I just wanted to throw everyone a spot of pause for a second.
Okay. All right. Seeing no public comment, we will move on to item number six on our agenda, which is public hearing items of which we have none. And next is seven A, which is reports of boards and committees responsible to the council. Chair, would you like to speak about the two subcommittees you're there?
There's a lot going on with the firehouse that.
There's a lot going on with the firehouse that um, I've seen and done. So a little week ago, I, what was Brian and Megan, just to take a quick look at the how the process, how it's going with the fire station hearing. Moving along, got street rock up, the doors, the bay doors, although I think this might be a change or somewhere in those. But it's moving along and so far, it's a date that I will know that it's still in the middle of day. I'm not sure if that may change, we might find out. But anyways, that was my little um, tour. And then at the last meeting, we, it's on the agenda later to add on as an alternate. Um, this is the fire chief to the subcommittee, but I might have to make an amendment to that unless the council wants to be best, but we'll, we'll talk about that there. Not really much, we talked about, no change orders, just things about the kitchen and things that they're working on. But the next meeting, there's going to be a lot of change orders, as you know, Katie, towards the end. A lot of change orders come up, so there'll be a packed um, agenda. Thank you, Megan, for, does it ever happen? And then yesterday, we did a site walk, it was a special meeting. We went to Station one forty and four forty, um, just to see their firehouse uh, leadership priorities that they want to do, just to give them an idea. That was really great, thank you to Assistant Chief that did a really good job. I'm walking Jacob and I through everything, it was very helpful. We had good questions and it was a beautiful day because it was a Tuesday. So, I think that's really, really it in a nutshell. So there's a lot going on, I've been really, Jacob and I really been trying to stay on top of it. The subcommittee is really good and like working on getting stuff done. And then I'm sure Ms. Mas, I can't wait till this first project is done. Yes. So as far as the ARPA.
When is your next firehouse meeting?
I'm sorry.
Just got to carry on.
Next week, next week.
Thank you.
Yes. But anyways, so trucks and stations and that, okay, anyway, so next week, we're actually going to have an ARPA meeting that's been a while. And now that we know our D E W Director Scott Laffin made significant savings on the radar, he saved twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars, that's gone back into ARPA funds. So Ms. Hancock has made an agenda for us for next week to vote on a couple of small items for um, for Swat. And again, I'll talk about it later when we do the fire study. There might be funds, I think, from there that we might be able to use for the cost. Because there's only thirty thousand, but we'll talk about that later too. So um, but I think that's it. Are you, Jacob, did Miss anything?
We covered it.
All right. Great. Thank you, are there any questions about firehogs or ARPA? Well, it's all passports.
Uh, are we allowed to discuss anything or are we just?
We met in executive session and getting updates, hoping to have something that's ready for the public.
It's moving, it seems slow, but there's definitely progress.
And you push him on the timeline, always to give you timelines, which is good.
Thank you. Um, any questions on that? Next is seven B, which is reports of town council liaisons.
I had planning and commission last night, it was a relatively brief meeting. Um, they talked about potential site modification at sixty-five Kingsbury Road. Um, nothing was decided, it was just like a preliminary discussion. That's one of the nice things about the planning and zoning commission is that they sort of have an open dialogue with residents and with business owners and all that, so that they can kind of avoid any major, you know, problems. So that's good. They continued their discussion about affordable housing, um, and large lot accessory structures. As they continue to sort of refine what, if any changes they want to make. Um, and with respect to the large lot accessory structures, um, that will, if they decide to make any changes, that will go to a public hearing, um, so they can receive input from the public. Um, that was it.
Yeah. Yeah, so last night, recreation, no, wait, yes, last night, we had a, we had a second meeting last night too. Recreation about, we had a meeting last night, there was no forum, but we did talk about, or they talked about other things. Nothing was voted on, obviously, but Brian already might know, but their registration on April first was a whopping one thousand one hundred and seventy registrations. Huge, and Ms. Buckler missed out on her opportunity, even though I gave her private test.
I got it in some moments.
All right, good, anyways. So anyways, the three-year-old program was so popular that they actually added on an afternoon class program, a class preschool. It's been approved by the state. Let's see, build to be worked on by parks, um, waters on Crandall, May fourth is a little league opening day. Um, the pads have been put in in the dugouts, which I believe that was part of some ARPA funds as well. And they are desperately looking for lifeguard, so if you know anybody, please let Mr. Watson.
Yeah, um, so the Economic Development Commission met last week. Um, they continued their discussion with the currency leave. And then additionally, um, their, this is in draft stage, but can't say, can't give, um, distribute anything, but they are kind of working on a project, kind of like rank different types of businesses and what value they bring to town to kind of assist with strategic. Um, I guess rank would be the wrong word, but kind of like just laying out what kind of value they've really got. Um, social benefit, like a coffee shop or something, whether it's more tax, better jobs. So I'm interested to see where that conversation continues to go. Yep.
Yeah, so the Agriculture Committee or Commission met um, on April first. Um, just a reminder, the uh, the um, first market, farmers market is made there. And so, so we're ready for that, so I'm excited. Um, so I'm just talking about, there's a pond on Campbell Farms and the gentleman who rents that was worried about dredging that pond a little bit deeper in the event that the fire department may need water from that pond to possibly tap in for putting on fires that, there doesn't seem to be a lot of water there anymore. So um, they brought up that idea, probably money for that. The website is up and running a little bit more, there's um, there's a complete uh, files for vendors that are going to be attending the market. And some movement on the voucher program, they're producing those vouchers that will be ready for the market. Still looking for student liaisons, so if anybody has a student that is interested in doing some work, um, a farmer, not some work, but each attending meetings and and uh, participating on behalf of schools, uh, they still need somebody. And then lastly, there was some concern or questions raised about whether or not they would be charged for the use of the uh, the green mat, the mat that's on the town green right now. And I believe we're going to have a conversation about that later. That was it.
Thank you. Um, so Permanent Celebration Committee met um, or one of our budget meetings, but they have given me an update on the uh, annual Memorial Day parade. Um, so the thirty-second Annual Memorial Day Parade is a go. It's going to be Sunday, May twenty-sixth at one P M. Parade theme is going to be honoring your sacrifice. Um, sounds like they're going to be having a coloring competition uh, leading up to the parade. Uh, next meeting is going to be April eighteenth. Thank you.
I attend Prague meetings. Looks like there are several every month. Um, mostly they're still in discussions about legislative policy that's under consideration. Uh, the legislative session uh, in the state ends on Wednesday, May eighth, I think. And um, we should get a summary of the impact of legislative changes after that from Prague. Uh, they continue advocate for endeavors that are important to their member towns like requirements for newspaper postings. Uh, can that be done via the website, for example, is one of the things that keeps getting done. For um, funding on uh, ECS and other funding mechanisms to member towns, things like that. And they are pretty effective, so we'll, we'll wait and see what they have to say. And the Health District meets next week, so they haven't met in a while, but that's the next meeting scheduled for the H G. Having gone over our liaison roles, we will move on to new business. Item eight point one is consideration of a resolution approving the transfer of one hundred seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars from the Board of Ed's audited unextended balance as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three to the Education Reserve Fund.
So this is a, an annual, we call it the one percent fund. That's a hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars. I told we'd never come close to uh, being one percent. Uh, will we transfer it over into the Education Reserve Fund, basically general fund money from the Board of Ed into the uh, Education Reserve Fund? I have Finance Director Lisa Hancock here to answer any questions about it. Um, or any opinion.
Sure, and just procedurally, this is already, this request has already gone through the Board of Ed?
Correct, according to the, the charter or policy.
What policy?
Yeah, ordinance eighty-six, chapter eight, section eight point two. It's already gone through the Board of Ed as required. Uh, and as required, it has to go through town council for us to vote to approve, to, to make that transfer of money. Thank you.
Are there any questions about this, this item? No. Okay. Then is there a motion to approve the resolution as outlined in agenda item eight point one? Um, calling the motion, is there a second? Joe's second motion, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous, thank you. Number eight point two on our agenda is review of revised fire study proposals.
All right, so um, as you know, we went out to bid uh, to consultant companies to look at our public safety, uh, specifically our A EMS service and fire service. Um, we spent a lot of money on ambulants, fire, both staff, apparatus, um, and facilities. And they do an excellent job here. There's been some question, do we need more, do we need less? Uh, this is an update on the, on the progress with hiring the uh, two consultants that we have narrowed it down to. I have Michael Hancock, I'm sorry, Michael Wilkinson uh, on here as well, I believe. And uh, and I believe the consultant, Mike is, is one of the, at least one of the consultants on.
Hi, this is Paul Bishop from C G R, I'm here.
Okay, great, and I believe the other one couldn't make it tonight, but um.
Yes, sir. I'm here, Bill Sturgeon, Fitch and Associates, thank you, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you. So we have, we have both on um, for any questions. So if you remember, we kind of wanted to narrow it down, you know, the basic thing is, do we have the right equipment, too much equipment? Uh, we're going to look at response times, number of calls that we get, um, just a whole bunch of different things. And uh, council wanted to meet again with the consultants, so they're here, should you have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah. Oh, go ahead. Um, thank you both, Fitch and C G R for coming back and doing this. But I know Fitch didn't change their price, which is okay, but C G R, you dropped significantly, I didn't. Is there, what is the biggest difference that dropped that price of, I think yours was originally seventy thousand?
Sure, um, so we were able to uh, to reduce the price in a couple of different ways. Um, one, it was, it was certainly helpful to have the conversation with you um, during the meeting and then, and then the follow-up afterwards to help focus in um, what you viewed as uh, some of the, the key questions. So that allows us to, when we're, we're working with you, to be able to uh, make sure we're, we're instead of doing a necessarily a really broad analysis, um, although it's important for us to develop that context and that, that, that broad understanding, but to really help you answer those, those handful of key questions that you saw. Um, we are also going to change our methodology a, a little bit. Um, it, it might not be too noticeable to you as our, as our client, but on our backend, um, rather than bringing a couple of us for a site visit, there will only be one. Um, so that saves on travel time and the personnel of that, that person being, you know, of having the other person in the room taking notes and, and such. Um, it is, makes us uh, you know, a little bit, allows us to lower our price a little bit. Um, and we always, when we make a proposal, we have a, a certain amount for contingency. And we're uh, we're going after the uh, the conversation with you, uh, with the understanding of, of the quality of your data. Um, our ability to be able to work through it quickly, um, allowed us to uh, to, to dial back on the amount that we were going to have held in contingency. So we uh, that was the, kind of the, the three factors that allowed us to uh, to lower our price.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Paul, I think that's all I have. Okay, and my question is to your question.
I did, I brought the wrong folder tonight.
Oh, man.
So I will let someone else go.
Okay. Go ahead, Chris.
Uh, more just a, a comment, I guess. Um, so I, I, I think it's good that we're doing the study because it's important to have um, objective information. So it allows us to make informed financial decisions for the town. And I do appreciate um, um, C G R going back and, 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 you know, lowering the price a bit to narrow the scope of what we need, so it meets um, our needs without getting too broad. So um, I think, you know, I appreciate the, the balance between getting information we need, but um, keeping it within the scope that we need, so the price is reasonable, so thank you.
Brian, when, last time we talked about this, um, the, the chief and the, some of the public safety personnel had a chance to, had a chance to review and were comfortable with the revised, with the proposals. Is that true also for these revised proposals?
Yes, uh, I believe so. Um, John could not make it tonight, um, and Mike is now frozen, but uh, they would be involved with all of this. They were filing before and these are paring down, so um, it's not like we are expanding the, the reach, but yes.
And in terms of process, um, we have an allocated amount of money that we, we committed to.
Yep.
Um, both of these proposals are more than that. What would the steps be if we wanted to move forward with one or with one of these? How would we find the delta?
So I want to say it's about fifteen thousand dollars or so that we need to cross, give or take. Um, and my first step would be meet with uh, our financial director and discuss options. Bring those options to council.
And in terms of determining which of these two proposals we wanted to go with, um, what, what were you thinking in terms of process steps? What needs happen next?
Uh, well, I want the fire chief, uh, for sure, and, and get his opinion. Uh, but really, we're ready to move when you are, so yeah, your direction, just tell us what, what do you want to go, who to hire, and, and we'll run, but again, not before the fiscal part is hashed out. And if it was something that needed a vote, we'd do that, if not, um, do that as well.
Do you have a question?
I don't remember one of them.
Okay.
Um, this is for. This is for, for Bill, actually. Um, so I was looking through both of the proposals. Um, and I saw pitches look broadly similar. I just wanted to confirm, were there any changes made to the Fitch proposal? Or is it uh, the same that was presented to us?
No, all we did, council member, was just um, address the questions and, and show what pages are at in the document. So you could clearly not have to look through the whole document to get the answer to those questions that you provided us.
Okay. But as far as the package goes, it was the same, okay? Thank you.
I was really hoping we were going to vote on this tonight, we've already reviewed it, started once. I don't know why we can't just vote on it. We have our assistant fire chief here. I don't know if you could give any input. Mentioned.
I, I know that the chief, our manager discussed. Because they met, they met with both companies and, so I would defer.
Brian, what did the chief say then? You must have an idea.
He had a preference off the top of my head. I don't know which one it is. I can't read the, whatever did Mansfield, I guess.
Fitch, that was Fitch.
Yeah, was his preference.
Okay, thank you. So I like the big emotion. Like Joe said, the last meeting and the past counselors of the past, you know, six months ago this goes, that just dragging it out and it's gonna take a while and whatever it is, it'd be nice to know before the next budget process starts, you know, if we're too much or too little, just the next steps. I'm comfortable voting tonight.
You want to make a motion?
Definitely. But actually, honestly, Katie, what is the, I think it was forty five, I can't.
Thought it was forty four or five. Forty four.
Forty four nine nine.
Thank you. That's what it says.
I knew it was, I like the motion, Fitch for the forty four thousand nine hundred ninety nine. And like Brian said, please, it's ours. Got to look into. But I was gonna say, offer pass some money, we allocate thirty, and I'm sure there's some money maybe. Have to vote and have that turned agenda. That's my motion.
So your motion is to approve the town to go forward with the Fitch proposal? Is there a second motion?
I'll second the proposal.
Is there a discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
What is the, I know what was mentioned tonight, but what is the main difference? Or is there any difference between the two proposals as they stand right now?
Is that to me?
Could be to anybody who has the answer to that question.
Price was the original, but both are very professional. And there's not, not a whole lot of difference in the two.
Yeah, the, the price is pretty similar now. I'm wondering, services wise, is there any difference right now? Are they pretty much on par? As they stand?
I can, I'm comfortable with either. That's what you're asking. I have no preference. My preference would lean towards that of the fire chief. This is his lane and he preferred Fitch. They're both products, professional products, obviously, in relation to studying the entire town, the population, the calls for service, the response times. Just, just they incorporate everything. If you look through the, I'm sure you did the package, but both are very comparable.
In the maybe this was addressed, but is the funding in place right? For the, are we good to go with the funding for the firehouse, for the study?
Not yet. Thirty thousand, what was it? Thirty thousand was committed here by council to do the proposal. We put it out to bid. Obviously, the bids came in well beyond that forty five being about the cheapest, and that's where we are right now. So we would need to find fifteen thousand dollars in that. I would, tomorrow morning, should you pick somebody, we're not signing a contract, but we're picking, looking to move ahead. We'd explore finding that fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to clarify, like, what we're voting on. So would we be voting on which company we're picking? And then like, waiting to, you know, execute contract subject to whatever we find for the additional funding. I think the only thing I'm hesitant about is just wanting to make sure we know where the working down the nine nine five or whatever, the difference of the being is coming from what's flowing. They kind of want to know.
So the motion before us is to approve the proposal of Fitch.
Okay. So it would not come back to us again from the financial standpoint of like the gap in like what they approved so far versus.
If, if it, if the town manager said that it, he would look into the funding, and if it needs to be approved by council, then it would come back to us. And if the funding can be done in such a way that it doesn't apply or by other financial, to come back to council, then it would not.
Okay. Yeah, we do, excuse me, that's okay. We do, we have to come back to council at any rate. I know our financial director, Lisa Hancock, has made some suggestions otherwise that you would have to vote on as well to move on to. So I don't think it hurts to select now.
Yeah, I think that's. Are you?
No, I, I think that's sort of the, I, that's sort of was my.
I mean, we put on some funding tonight, but I think we all want to.
But we already have some.
Without, you know, without, we want to dig into it more.
Yeah, I think my question was just, I'm more comfortable, you know, selecting which company, just wanting to make sure that we have some idea of what like physical funding is, so thanks.
Any other comments?
So if we do move forward with one of, one of them, what's the timing on them starting the study from our perspective? Are we ready for that? And are they able to move that date?
We are ready for them to start as soon as they can. And we're told pretty much right away they'll be able to get rolling.
Both of them?
Yes, I'm ready to roll.
I'm wondering if councilor, you'd check, you'd be willing to amend your motion to select Fitch, subject to the next meeting we approve the, or we, we hear the proposed financing for this endeavor. That sounds very fair. And I'm sorry, Jacob, you need a second. Is that okay with you? So we, we, the motion before us now is we would select Fitch as our preferred vendor. That if at the next town council meeting, we would ask the town manager to come back to us with a funding plan. For, if it requires our approval, then, then we would consider it for approval. If it's just an information share, then we would be happy to listen to that information. Does that sound good?
Aces.
Sounds great. Thank you.
And, and I would add a, a second request, not necessarily in the motion, but also when you come back to us, Brian, if, if you could let us know what the timeline is, you know.
Timeline on?
On the, on starting.
And when it's finished.
Yeah, when, when, when do you think that you'll be able to sign a contract?
Yep.
And what's the expected timeline? And perhaps you could keep us updated on a monthly basis on that in your town ledger.
Absolutely. I, I do think Mike was able to get unmuted. Mike, are you still there?
Yes, I'm, I'm there.
Yep, exactly. He's having problems with the other. Anything you want to add to what Mike?
No, just that I'll follow up with Paul Bishop from Fitch, and we can move forward from there.
Alright.
We'll split it.
So is there any other discussion then on this motion that is before us? Yeah, okay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you. Uh, next item on our agenda is the consideration of resolution amending the membership of the firehouse subcommittee.
So as you know, we have a current firehouse going, building projects going on at Station three forty on Garing Road, and improvements to two others, one at Crystal Lake and the other one on Plains Road. There are a lot of decisions that need to be made in those, in, in these projects. And we have a committee as a result of that. And at the request of the chair, that we add alternate Assistant Fire Chief Carl Deojan, and I support.
Would you like to sneak us on this point?
Yeah, so I have been, I remember Brian, Jacob for a while about it. I just, before I forget, I, thank you, Megan, for putting this together so quickly, but I think it needs to be amended because the subcommittee actually voted on our assistant chief to be the alternate for the chief when he is unavailable. And we can leave it as is. He's an alternate if somebody else can't make it. That's totally fine with me. I don't know about Jacob. But that was the original. Right, Megan, that was the.
I don't think I picked that up during the subcommittee meeting, but.
Maybe. I can look at the minutes real quick if you want, but I don't. Brian, do you remember?
I don't think it's a concern.
Okay. I just wanted to put it out there. On a high basis. Well, I think our assistant chief would be great. He's very valuable, as he showed Jacob and everything. And fire station is very knowledgeable with his background as well. And I think him and his team, Carl's been a big part of the priority list and stuff. So I think he would be an excellent addition.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just echo what Colleen says. Carl's been a huge resource during our regular meetings, just a great source of knowledge. And it would be great to pat him up on this role for times when, when anyone can't make it. Also takes a little bit of pressure off John, too, who I know has a lot of things on his plate. So I think it's a, it's a good arrangement and a good idea to move forward.
Is there any other discussion on this matter? Then is there a motion to approve the resolution outlined in agenda item eight point four eight?
So.
So moved by Chris. Is there a second?
Second.
Jacob's second. I heard Jacob. Uh, any discussion for the vote? Then all of those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a continuation of discussion of current sidewalk policy as it pertains to the use of the temporary ADA grass mat costs associated with its use and subsequently charging groups who use the green fur vents to pay for all or portion of those fees.
Um, correct. So as you know, while we're working through ADA access, permanent ADA access to the green or otherwise, we have a temporary solution, a grass mat that we can move around with some effort and some cost on the green. It's not as good as actual ADA walkway or concrete walkway is already is on the green, but right now it's the best we have. It's expensive. Cost us about fifteen thousand last time, but that was, and we had a couple thousand donation. So we're all, and we're looking at it being a lot more. They last about five to six years, they said, with light use. These are getting heavy use. And so we're looking at the cost of replacing.
During our last meeting, we discussed the possibility of, for this current calendar year, asking the town with unavailable resources to place the mat on the green to maximize its efficacy. And kind of put a pause on changing the town green policy. And we, that was part of the discussion, and we agreed to come back tonight, now at our next meeting, and, and revisit that. Is there any comments, any thoughts on next steps here?
Okay. So I guess, and this is a tough one, because we got a lot of things we want to balance out here. You don't, definitely don't want to deter uses of the green, but it is expensive. I think we should have some sort of plan for replacement. I guess my thought is, I like the idea of maybe trying to, you proposed Katie for the, for first year. Or first year being this.
This calendar year.
Yes, this calendar year. But going forward, I do feel like it's not unreasonable to suggest a fee space system, perhaps tied to estimated people in attendance. I understand that's part of the form that's filled out. I think that would be relatively objective. You know, this is a small event. We might not move that. There's no fee. It's a larger event. We can, there can be a fee for that, and we can consult Brian as to what will be a fair number for that. My main concern, I guess, with any of this is that should we be in a situation where we don't need replacing that because we could put in a sidewalk, which we don't know. But if we could, make sure that we can get any funds that are collected back to the groups that contributed. I think that's, that's the right thing to do. So that, that should be part of our plan. Yep.
Thank you.
Sure. So how long has the mat been sitting out there right now? It doesn't seem like it's taken up, you know, off season or between events. It's basically just been laying out there, right?
Correct.
Okay. Is that, is that in any way damaging the mat? Can we prolong its life if we actually pulled it up?
I'm sure in storage it, it would last longer. That is correct. But we wanted to leave it out there for tree lighting ceremony and the menorah as well. Brown got frozen. Pulling it up would be damaging at that point. And then, then we also weigh the fact that we also want to have access to the green during the spring. And we'll move it or adjust it soon based on the farmer's market when we get together with the different groups. And then Scott.
Okay.
Well, we have not been weed whacking it or anything.
That's good. In respect of the farmer's market, since, since I'm a liaison, I kind of hold them close to my heart. And now they're really nice people. But they're, they're also part of the town, right? So because it makes sense to charge, it's almost like you're robbing people, like they paw in disregard. So does it make any sense to charge commission that's also part of town? Could basically, we have to fund that.
Yep.
And then get the money back from them. So do we, do we put a exemption for, for town function events?
I, my suggestion is we got to pay for it somehow. And why do we, the town, not have to fund for our events, but we're gonna ask other people to do it? That's just a suggestion. But at the same time, I say, let's table this suggestion, see what happens with the permanent sidewalk before we start looking at the funding of it.
Yeah, I, I largely agree with Jacob and Joe. It's hard because we have two sort of competing interests, which is one, trying to make sure we have funds in the event that we need this back. Hopefully we don't, you know, for too long, but and then also wanting to make sure that any cost isn't prohibitively high on any of the groups that want to use the green. Because I think there's a lot of green events on the green. And as Joe mentioned, whether it's a town group or even, you know, the Boy Scouts or some of the nonprofit type group, I don't want them to not be able to use it because of the, the fee is prohibitively high. So we also did have, I think we got an email from the Chair of the Ag Commission, maybe, kind of expressing a similar concern that Joe raised. So I think, I think we, taking Katie's approach for this first calendar year makes sense. See how things unfold. And then go through there.
I'll make one. I, I, I think I agree with everyone else. I think we'll kind of take it one step at a time, see what happens in this next calendar year, and then kind of revisit it. Obviously, we don't know how long we're gonna have to be using the temporary sidewalk. You know, I think it's the hope of, I think, most of us that there's gonna be a more permanent solution in the near future. And hopefully, we don't have to revisit this. But I think just getting the ball rolling and, and actually thinking about what we're gonna do. Because eventually, if this drags on for too long, and we have to continue using the temporary sidewalk, unfortunately, it's gonna come at a cost. So simply reviewing it, taking into consideration.
One additional question. So yeah, this is a little of a group to kind of just table this for the moment. That's totally fine. But I think that over the next year, one thing that would be helpful to have as we have this conversation is if we did decide to start something in twenty twenty five, let's say, that has three years left of life at that point. How much should we need to collect? So that we can get some sort of hard numbers around this discussion. I think that would be useful.
And I believe I have forwarded the events to you already, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So kind of we're working off of that kind of map.
Okay.
So we don't actually need to take any formal action on this if we, unless we want to. And if we don't take any formal action, you would
Table it.
Table it, and you would work with Public Works to do the best you could for this year.
Correct. For this year, and pending any legal outcomes.
Yep.
We bring it up as needed.
Any different guidance that we want to, I'm gonna draw this. We'll go into this guidance. Okay, so there's general head nodding. Nobody's formally objecting, so I think we can move on then to our next agenda item. Thank you, everybody. Agenda Item 8.5 is consideration and action for scheduling a public hearing for April 25th, 2024 concerning an application for the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program and discussing the town's program income reuse plan. Brian, before you talk about the content, can you just, can we just comment really quick on April 25th? Our next scheduled meeting would normally be two weeks from today, which is April 23rd. That is the first, second night, I think, of Passover. So we, the Vice Chair and I, as prompted by the Town Manager's Office, did agree to move this meeting till April 23rd. Okay, so that's why we're not talking about April 23rd, but a special meeting that would happen on April 23rd.
Got it.
So thank you. Tell us about the progress.
Okay, under 8.5, the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Application. So in a nutshell, we have Old Post Village down there. It needs lots of improvements. They're managed by a company, they have a management company that manages the property and other properties here in town and around the other states. They want to apply for the grant. They do so in conjunction with the town. In order to apply for the grant, one of the, one of the requirements is that we, the town, have a public hearing on it and vote on it. Typically as we've done with other grants. I have Bev Belli, our Health and Human Services Director, and our Grants Director, Megan Masa, here to explain it in much more detail should you need it for this.
And at this point, we are being asked to set a public hearing.
Correct.
And at the public hearings, can you tell us what the public hearing is for?
At the public hearing, we'll have to go over the details of the grant. We'll have to go over the details of the program, what's available for funding. It's to give the citizens and the residents of the town an opportunity to understand this program and what's available and to make comments. We will have to go over our program income plan, which is money that's derived from our housing rehab program. And probably several other federal requirements, but we'll be on board for all of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then after the public hearing, is there any action that the council would need to take? We will have.
We'll have a, we'll have a couple items, I think, for that agenda relating to this project. One will be a resolution for the Town Manager to sign the grant application paperwork. We'll also need to do an update to our Fair Housing Plan. So that will also require a resolution. And we may be asking you to waive building permit fees as part of that as well.
Okay. All right, and all of those would be discussion items as correlated agenda items on that agenda.
And we've been working cooperatively with L B House Management, who does manage Old Post Village. And they've secured funding as well for an architect to do the plans. Because one of the requirements of Small Cities is that you have complete architectural plans. So we'll, and they'll be present too, so we will. All again.
All right. Thank you for allowing me to understand the procedure. Are there any questions on what's happening next and potentially setting or voting to set a public hearing for April 25th? No, no questions? All right then. Is there a motion to schedule the public hearing for April 25th as outlined in Agenda Item 8.5? It's moved by Jen.
Second.
Second by Chris. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll see you on April 25th for more. All right, 8.6 on our agenda is discussion of current membership of the Historic District Commission and the setting of a public hearing on April 25th, 2024.
Thank you, Chair. So this is, this is to discuss membership on the Historic District Commission. As everyone on Town Council is aware, there has been a plurality of emails over the last couple of months in relation to decorum and professionalism from the Historic District Commission. With that, we are examining the Section C 5-2 of our town charter where Town Council may remove any member of a board in short. We have decided nothing at this point. It's strictly related to professionalism and decorum and attendance. And those are the only matters in which the C 5 was discussed, at least with my office from everyone on council. So that's where we are now. If you were to decide to move forward, we would do a resolution for removal, which would also require notice. And we looked into our Town Attorney into executive session. He gave us an opinion. Then he double-checked his opinion with FOI on executive session. They confirmed his opinion that executive session is not needed. And we would have a a resolution that would go into public hearing and then a vote over the next two Town Council meetings. So that's all there is. That's where we are now.
So if I, if I understand, then in terms of process, at this point, we're looking for consensus from the council to request a resolution, more than one resolution maybe, to be presented at our April 25th, 2024 meeting for the Town Council's consideration. The resolutions would state the reasons why we were considering removal of members of the Historic District Commission, provide notice to such a member, and set a public hearing date for the following meeting on May 4th.
Correct.
Are there any questions, comments from councils?
Maybe just looking for, I don't. They, they, I'm a little confused. Like, I honestly, you know, I've watched several meetings and they're concerned. But as a resident spoke earlier, I'm a person that I'm constantly moving volunteers. I mean, maybe it's just something we ask them not to be the chair and somebody takes over that position, leadership, give them a warning. I'm not sure. But I'm not fully on board. I don't agree with the behavior. I'm just saying that it's like your job, you do something wrong, unless they've already been talked to. I'm not sure if they have been, Katie. So we're drafting up a resolution. What exactly, just looking for ideas to put into it or?
So I'm going to take that one thing at a time. If I get something, please remind me because it's not.
No problem. I'm just trying to figure out how to get there.
So we are not voting on anything right now.
Okay.
The, we are, I'm looking, we're looking to see if there's consensus from the council to ask the Town Manager's Office to prepare a resolution, which would be presented to us for consideration at our next meeting. In that resolution, that would include the reason why we're considering removing a member of the Historic District Commission, provide notice to such a member, and to set the public hearing for that for public input. Sure, no, it's okay. The issue that you specifically asked about, the opportunity to to speak with members of the Historic District Commission regarding their behavior to try to work with them?
Yep.
I can speak to that myself. Perhaps the Town Manager could also speak to it. I have made, as the liaison to Historic District Commission, going on my third year now, I have made several attempts to work with the Chairperson on procedure. I have offered to, to do some conversations about what, you know, how to improve on procedure. I have come up with several ideas on perhaps asking the Town Clerk to do some training on procedure. You know that the Town Clerk's Office has created that new document that went out to all boards and commissions earlier this year. That was provided to the Historic District Commission members as well as all other board and commissions. My efforts to specifically work with the Chair of Historic District Commission, unfortunately, were, were not accepted. My offers to have various meetings and different forums, different opportunities, none of those were accepted and taken up. So my attempts, I have to try to help on this matter. Unfortunately, didn't go anywhere. And I know that the Town Manager has also made attempts to work with members of the Commission on improvements to process that maybe he can speak to.
So yes, look, I understand your apprehension. C 5 is something that hasn't been exercised since I've been here. Nor should it be given a lot of exercise, in my personal opinion and professional opinion, as it lacks confidence. The amount of complaints that we've received on this board and decorum and professionalism addressed to all of you is obviously concerning. That's in writing. In regards to verbalization, when people watch the meetings or hear the meetings, it's beginning to have an effect on confidence of us as a whole and our ability to govern. Anyone that serves on a public board, anyone. I thank them so much and I'm so happy for what they have done. And I have nothing but respect for, for everyone that's served on every board here in town, and I thank them. This is a matter of culture. The culture of the board, and that's affected directly by professionalism and decorum. And, you know, I come from a career where I've been asked to change cultures and it's difficult. It's very hard to make, make changes, institute change. But I think, you know, as we vote, you know, all read in the emails, it's, in my belief, you all have your own votes. And for the record, I don't have a single vote on it. But in my belief, and so many others, it's time for a culture change. We have so many great commissions in town that do such great work. Some do painful work, the Board of Assessment Appeals, zoning, you know. We have so many, like, so many commissions that everyone wholeheartedly trusts and loves. PCCs, Conservation Court. The HDC has been the source of distrust. And the emails that you see, again, professionalism and decorum. It's time for a culture change, in my opinion. Again, I don't have a vote, but I ask you all to consider that.
Thank you. So any questions, comments?
So in respect to procedure, I just want to make sure I understood this. So because an attorney here that discussed the requirement for an executive session to raise these issues. So, but I didn't hear what we just discussed in executive session. It was a resolution that's going to be presented in public and then something following and we vote on whether or not we will forward this. So have we checked with our attorney as to whether or not there's an executive session?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I know.
That's, that's what you were talking about?
Yeah, we have reached out by council representing others in the Historic District Commission and a lawsuit currently against the town, basically telling us falsely that we needed to have executive session.
Okay.
Our attorney disagreed and gave us advice as such. Our Chair asked him to double-check with the FOI Commission to get clarity. He reached out with the FOI Commission and he was very succinct in that note. This does not happen in the executive session. They are employees or otherwise, perhaps they would. This is not one of those.
Sorry.
Yeah, I'll just keep it brief. You know, we've got, like Brian said, we've got a bunch of boards and commissions and people do great work. But I've never seen so much controversy or. It's very disappointing to see. I do appreciate you, Brian, and you, Katie, reaching out and seeing what we can do. But I do feel that this is a, unfortunately, necessary next step in the process that we need to take.
I'll disagree with Jacob, especially in light of the emails we've gotten. I just think it's always important for us to pay attention to the feedback we're getting from the community. So, yeah, unfortunately, I do think it's important to at least report at this point, given the number of residents who have reached out to their councils.
Jen's gone. Did you want to say something? Yeah. Things fell in the forest. It's my impression that this is not something that we're jumping into and that we're rushing into over one topic or one discussion meeting and that this has been an ongoing issue that has continued without any kind of improvement. I don't think it's anything that anyone here is taking lightly and trying to rush into a decision.
Sorry, go ahead.
It's okay.
I'm a little technical.
It's all right. And rush into any kind of decision or make any kind of hasty decision. I think that we're going to make sure we do our best to follow the correct procedure. But it is important to listen to the public and overall, it would be unwise to go so long and hearing so much from the public about the Historic District Commission without taking that into consideration. Thank you.
Will you check? Go ahead. Lawyers who have been stable, I mean, nervous every time. Of course. Anyways, would it be an idea for our lawyer and the lawyer to touch base if they have different? I'm not sure, Brian. Oh, I'm sorry. I just, okay. Okay. Is that?
Yeah.
So, until I have you. So is there any objection to asking the Town Manager to bring to us for consideration at our next meeting? A resolution without stating the reasons why we would consider removal of each of Jody Coleman, Marzialo, and Kathy Back from the Historic District Commission? So we two resolutions, the reasons why we're considering their removal, to provide notice to each member and to set a public hearing date of May 14th, 2024. Any objection to moving forward that direction to the Town Manager? Okay, seeing no objection, that is the direction we ask you to take.
No, thank you.
The next item on our agenda is 8.7, which is appointments to vacancies on various municipal boards and commissions, of which we have none tonight. Item number nine is old business, which we don't have any. Item 10 is the report of the Town Manager.
Thank you. We have our electronic recycling event and we get back with our shredding event at the same time. That's coming up on April 27th. I thank town staff for all that they do with this, particularly to my port side here, Sarah Beth Nimison, and then the Cert Team.
It's working, Katie.
The Cert Team.
Sorry.
I'm just talking about something positive here, sir. Please don't disrupt the meeting.
Excuse me.
Anyways, the positive event of the cycling, electronics, and shredding, and what a great job Sarah Beth has done. And the Cert Team, they come out and volunteer. I know my mom brings all her stuff there once a year and calls me right after and says how great the Cert Team is. So I can't say how, again, another group that is just beloved in this town and what great work. And I'm behind the scenes actively trying to work to get more members there, not that there are enough huge shortage of them, but just such great people and identified people to come, I try to push them there. That's, that's great. The Board of Assessment Appeals did meet last week. They made reductions to a total of six accounts totaling. Uh, they made reductions to a total of six accounts totaling basically a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Uh, a total of thirteen appeals uh were filed and uh they also have some time to file an appeal with court uh should they wish to. Um, some good news coming on in our uh development, the Girl Scout camp has full building permits issued. Way, way, way up, I'm breathing through beautiful property, but it's going to be one of the main camps for the Girl Scouts here in town. We're hoping by summer, I don't know if they'll have it this summer, they're going to, they'll be using the property this summer anyways. I'm not sure the whole camp will be going, some people don't even know there's this great Girl Scout camp up there, the the Girl Scouts of America sold a lot of properties in Connecticut, they decided to retain the one in the very tippy top corner of Tallent. Uh, to have some great uh obviously Girl Scout events up there. Our um from previous relationships uh in previous careers, I I developed with the Girl Scouts, uh I've been meeting with them uh frequently to push uh help. Uh, push this through in a timely manner, our town staff has been outstanding. Our um obviously Jim Paquin helps on so many uh different things, he's been helping and Rob Debecker, our Fire Marshal. Um, has been and they've been helping them through, you know, there's been some issues um maintaining within code. Uh, but also trying to assist them to uh get get the project through um and it's moving along. Santini Development is moving along uh very well. The, and we haven't talked about this much, Tricia Elastics down on um. Just off across from Kingsbury down there behind Shay's Electric, for those who don't know. Um, is moving and they're going to build a brand new fifteen thousand uh square foot gymnastics facility on Tallent Stage Road, vacant property. Uh, behind, I believe it's Birch Mountain there, that that old place, um, so. It's going to be just a fan, I mean, the gymnastics place is already great and this is going to be um even better, and so the great news uh for Tallent. As you know, uh eight thirty A M, uh, what's what was the date? Is the cannabis, the seventeenth, yeah, there's going to be the the grand reopening of Butter uh in the Fieldstone Commons. Starbucks has moved ahead uh with the state of Connecticut and they're 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 basically got the green light to go ahead and run, they got their paperwork filed with the state. Uh, and we're in good shape, uh looks like good things happening there, so developmental wise, we're doing um some good things, are you Services Bureau? Uh, under under uh that ability, uh they're going to do a youth services uh day at the Capitol and bring kids to the Capitol. Um, and get a chance to 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 meet with legislators um and and get a look at our uh some of our political processes. And the amazing building uh that it is up there. Getting along. In the library, we have a Bruce John will perform uh music and uh that's a guy's name, Bruce John, not Bruce John, I tell Bruce John will perform music. And Movement Program Friday the twelfth at eleven A M, uh, that's this Friday, um. Then we also have, oh, we, I do want to thank the library, they gave away five hundred solar eclipse glasses in the span of uh just two weeks. Uh, so we're really thankful uh for them. The Agricultural Commission, uh, they mean they really, they're just doing a great job, uh, they've launched a website for our Green Farmers Market. Uh, as we look, I I asked Sarah Beth to get us a meeting with the um, yeah, commission prior to the farmers markets and a couple others. Uh, stakeholders um in relation to uh before we get going on there and promotion and how it's going to run. Uh, we'll look at the mat, a lot of things I've also offered to the Saturday Farmers Market. On Route seventy four, due to the construction of that bridge, it's going to be closed, it might affect their uh Farmers Market adversely, they're going to go move ahead as planned, but I told them if it's bad. And you want to merge in with us on Sundays, we would love to have them, um, and that's Brian O'Hare, son of the uh former uh gentleman in town here, uh his father, Mr. O'Hare, that that ran the Farmers Market before him. Uh, the Conservation Commission, man, what if? I thought it was a, you know, kind of a goofy thing for them to do, it was incredibly successful, I couldn't be happier about it, the Bigfoot and Unicorn uh tracking event. Uh, this weekend, I got some amazing video, uh, so just to just doing great things uh for our talent, we we couldn't be happier about that. Um, I want to thank Megan Masa, she got us about uh twelve. We plan on, we believe we're getting, is it confirmed yet on the twenty two thousand Megan? For the Barbara Pettigent Library Media Center.
We are in the, we have been submitted for for our final approval, it's a little complicated because of the motion on the docket, so we have to. We've been put forward for final consideration.
Um, this point moving forward, every grant application is a little complicated, we'll just make that as a the point of notice, it's just see, she has to bend in so many different directions with each grant, it seems like everything is different. Twenty two thousand is not going to accomplish what we need, we'll look for donations uh for the rest, I don't anticipate. Uh, coming to the town for that, but at the very least, we should have at least that much, we should go do a heck of a lot. Uh, hoping to get more, our fire station is running along three forty really well. Um, and I thank the Chair and Vice Chair uh for pushing things along, um. We have some some a couple minor issues, but it looks fantastic, a beautiful building uh and coming along just fine. Uh, I want to thank our Public Safety and the Connecticut State Police for doing the polar plunge to benefit Special Olympics at our beautiful and getting more beautiful uh Crandall's Pond uh last week. Or two weeks ago, I uh. If you drive by Crandall's today, you'll see some beach improvements, we did our walkthrough for Crandall's in preparation for the summer, so many things that had gotten lax, not by the fault of anyone currently staffed here. Uh, we're going to improve upon the pond and again, at no extra cost to this point um to the town, I thank Bruce Watts, uh Scott Lappin. Uh, and Paul Russell for their efforts there, they had, you can see they had the rakes and Bobcats out on the beach uh today, we have some more sand coming in, we'll look at uh. Uh, making some repairs uh to ADA, um, putting the dock back out that was taken away before COVID, um plumbing those and John might, Litel might help with the with his divers, getting the. Uh, poles uh situated, getting the lines out, uh cutting the grass in the swim areas, you know, who wants to go swimming when there's grass coming up through the water, it's a disaster. Um, I'm scared of that, and so they're going to cut, we bought the tools, I mean, you know, like a fifty dollar tool um to to get the grass below the surface. Uh, so I I have high hopes for Crandall's, the improvements we've made there so far have been, I believe, fantastic, again, thanks to uh to Mr. Peck, uh our our Eagle Scout, but we built on it with. Um, with Public Works and we're going to continue to build on it again, it's just such great feedback last year on that. State Police, the contract uh we have currently, we do not have a contract, however, they have um. Assigned an attorney finally to us, a former Tallent resident. Um, and I've spoken there at length in the last couple of weeks, including today, uh, or yesterday, I believe she wanted like what kind of statistics and such would we the town want to track? Um, I provided those, a lot of things like something as simple as this morning, we don't know who but troopers are on every day. We don't know if troopers are on every day, um, it's that kind of uh thing that we'd like to be up to date, you know, I asked Sarah Beth, can you see if you can get a trooper up here? Uh, to talk to me about tonight's event and thank you to the State Police for uh covering that, but we don't know, we have anybody, so looking for those, just those kind of simple things. Um, that we have going on and 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 with that, I want to thank the Connecticut State Police, a resident trooper, uh and Lieutenant Hayward gave us. Uh, an extra guy, I've been in contact with State Police since the uh before the plane landed. Uh, with some of the the traffic division that that busted, it's not here already, I believe it already went through actually. Um, so I thank them for that, I thank Chief Litel for getting his apparatus and the flag out there and his staff uh for getting that out there. Um, and it's it's just the very positive for the town uh when this when this moves through. I have some good news for the P C C uh coming up in regards to the surplus of equipment and hopefully the attaining a golf cart. Uh, again, May fifth is going to be our first Farmers Market, I can't wait and uh that's all I have, any questions?
Questions on that, you're sure?
I have a question, it's um about the conservations uh committees. But I was getting messages, yeah. I was getting messages from coworkers about that, I don't live in Tallent, so it's really, it's kind of cool to see you really kind of put put us on the map.
We got good media on it and.
Yeah, very creative, so definitely glad we got so creative people, that's talent.
So am I, again, I thought it was. Glad they did it, yes.
Thank you for that, very thorough report. Uh. Next item on our agenda is adoption of minutes and we have. Uh, meeting minutes packets in front of us. Um. We have uh the budget meetings of March twentieth, March twenty first, March twenty fifth. As well as the regular meeting minutes of March twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, is there a motion to approve these minutes?
So I'm going to approve the uh March twentieth, March twenty first, March twenty fifth, March twenty sixth, maybe that's.
So motion was made by Jacob, segment by Chris, is there any discussion on these?
I just want to say thank you Lisa, who's we're taking all these minutes uh.
Great, uh, all those that have more than proven minutes? I'm not. That was Ian, thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is court files. I think I've had over a couple hundred emails in the last two or three months, so here we go. Town Council meeting, um, I just want to say there was forty that on April night, so twenty six. Emails were put into the packet of the um public here. Thank you. They've got, you guys got them all in, um. Since then. Since then, we received, okay, so literally the next day, so go on then. Four for the town manager budget, one for the senior center. Concerns of a letter received about cut uh curbs in the vineyards. Um, more move of uh events away from the green for ADA reasons. Discuss about Thursday's budget meeting for transparency, embarrassed about behavior of Thursday's meeting, concerned about using. Um, debt service for board of ed. Let's go, and the. Resident supports education, also concern about chairs, behavior towards others, concern about changing eight historic. District membership of volunteers and transparency. Uh, email of interest to fill an alternate seat on the Historic District, uh, I think Chris and Joey might have seen one. Um, there was a resignation from the Historic District, a FOIA request regarding uh from the Historic District. Concerns of historic behavior, concerns about town council chair behavior from Thursday's budgets meeting. Um. Um, email. Oh, email uh interest in historic district committee, so that was two, I believe. Um. Writer concerned that does not want to, um. This one was regarding uh the mat on a green for the ad question, and Joe touched base on that, that just came in today. Writer concerned about H uh historic district members being removed, concerned about board of ed, um, and why sergeant was added back at the last. One of the last motions, um, and then we got one lately, thank the chair on her leadership from the last week, um, stressful budget meeting. Um, and I think the resident might have asked last week, so total to date. Even hundred emails for the Board of Education budget um that we got. In thirty six of those, right, there's a hundred and thirty six emails, so hopefully, I'm trying to keep up with them and if I missed any, um, please excuse me. Yeah. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the Chairperson's report, um. I will be holding Chair hours next Thursday, March eleventh, six thirty in the library. Um, as you know, I invited all the chairs of boards and commissions to join me earlier, uh actually, either in January or December. Um, this month on my schedule is uh the Board of Ed Chair Tony Cole, the permanent celebration commission chair Mary Kat Souzy and the Historic District Commission Chair Jody Coleman Marzio. So that's uh Thursday, uh March eleventh at six thirty, so two days from today. Um, next. Yes. I'm gonna, I'm going to transition my head to April, so it's, I'm sorry, it's next Thursday, April eleven, thank you for fixing my. Uh, my month here, um. Just a reminder that next Wednesday, April seventeenth, seven P M here in Town Council Chambers and virtually. Is the annual budget presentation, um, and next Thursday, the eighteenth at noon is the same presentation at the seniors. That's all for me. Uh, next item on the agenda is communications and petitions from councilors. So anyone who wishes to. Have a few, I actually, it's annoying, like, what's that? Go ahead. Oh, okay. So the first one is, sorry, my eyes are getting old and tired, so. I had Professor Part a week ago for a citation for telecommunicated week, which is next week, that's bottom nine nine one one dispatch. And I did not get a email back from the Chair or the Vice Chair, I got it, so I wrote my own. Not a citation, but my words. Um, it's, I'm sorry, Colleen, I just, I didn't receive any mail like that. Sure you did, but I can forward it to you if you wouldn't mind. Yeah. There's a couple that was in yours, but anyways, so our nine one one operators are the ultimate first responders. Are the unsung heroes in emergencies and crises, their knowledge and professionalism are crucial as they make critical decisions. Gathering information and swiftly dispatch necessary aid, all in a calm manner. As residents, we trust them to make life-saving decisions. Thank you to all the men and women who work twenty four hours a day, seven days a week to ensure that we have the help we need in whatever situation we face. I am forever thankful for your critical service to save their lives, that's not me personally, calling you to check, but on a side note, um, I'm also delivering. Something to the dispatch center, which is from all seven councilors. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Second, I have again not heard from the um Town Council Chair, I requested last week um that we add. Something to the April twenty fifth meeting for Phoenix Finance to discuss an answer about bond ratings and how they couldn't pack on credit ratings. I have not received an answer from the Chair, I did think that were from Jacob, thank you Jacob. Really, really sad that I'm not getting responses, um. Next. I don't even know where we're starting with this one. But over a month and a half, I've been working on the budget entirely by myself. Over hundreds and hundreds of pages on my by myself, been shut out on certain things and yes, the Republicans talk to me, there's nothing wrong with that. So, with saying that, last Thursday was the worst meeting I've ever witnessed and sat in. It was a disgrace to our community and I apologize to all of Tallent and all our town staff, it should have never happened. Regardless of how you feel, if we get what others got. It's happened for years, I know our Chair has spent countless hours in the finance office before she was Chair. I didn't mind because I figured she was just a data collector. There's nothing wrong with that. And the filibuster in time for five hours tricked new members and abused people in lack of respect for council members. Yelling, I have the floor, you can't speak, you're out of line, they can't use certain word, but also concerned. I'm I'm honestly concerned about leadership. What is happening, it says me, there's so much divisiveness on this council compared to the last two years, it's awful. We are better than that, we are elected leaders, we need the community to have faith in us and trust us. I challenge every single one of us to do better, treat each other with dignity and follow the broad rules, yes, we're going to have mistakes along the way. But we need to trust our staff, build confidence to the public, believe in us again. So. Anyone else?
I guess I'll go.
Okay.
Um. I believe there's been a lot of chatter about what has happened um. On Thursday's meeting and what was the big issue? Um. About the information that was shared or not shared, um. I don't believe. Uh. Well, I'm not aware if I think it was intentional or not, um, but I I think one thing that needs to be cleared up about the information. That wasn't shared was um, this was not just uh scenarios that were run. By uh Counselor Yechek and Counselor Mari that we felt was not shared. Um, it was actual revenue numbers that had changed, um, that the um. This Hancock and the town manager had uh. Were aware of that had changed as of Tuesday. Uh, that were not shared with the rest of the town council. Um, there was a uh email exchange, I believe with Counselor Shay regarding the um bond rating. Um, that was also, there was a lot of good information in there that was also not shared with the rest, um. And I think, and I can only speak for myself, I think what was frustrating is um. Coming into a meeting where we're supposed to be making a decision about the budget. coming into a meeting where we're supposed to be making a decision about the budget and not having all necessary information and not working on it, even playing field with the other councillors. And personally, and I don't think this was in any way malicious. But it appears as councillor Utech, councillor Mari and the rest of the majority, or I'm sorry, the rest of the Republicans may have had that information and didn't know that myself, councillor Thorgarder and councillor Moran did not have that information. So the three of us were going into this with less information to make a decision about the budget. And it's frustrating. I believe that I can echo what councillor Utech has said. That we should all be able to work together. But I think if there are a few that are at a disadvantage, especially with certain information like revenue numbers or or bond information, again, I will, I will say it again, I don't blame any of the town councillors for that. It feels uneven. It feels like there is a bit of like a like ball hiding, even though, even if that wasn't the intention. But I wanted to clear that up because I know, and I hate social media for this reason. I know a lot of talk on social media that this was just running scenarios. That's all it was. And what's the big deal? So I wanted to make it clear that there was information that should have been shared with all the town councillors that was not shared with all the town councillors. And we walked into this meeting having to kind of scramble to get all the information that the rest of the town councillors had. Just so that we can clear that up and people can get that right, an open discussion. Thank you.
Chris. So I tried to, I, my memory, my memory is not perfect, but I thought and I tried to find the minutes and I didn't see the minutes, but there was a, there was a point in one of our meetings prior to the budget meeting where Lisa had indicated that the assessor had come back and modified his numbers and that there would be some changes to revenue numbers based on his revised estimates. And at the time, I don't believe she had firm numbers to what that would be, but it was something that, that she was working on. And I believe I'd inquired about that when she mentioned that, I inquired about whether or not there was a change to some of the elderly elderly assistance numbers. And she said those hadn't been changed yet. So, you know, it's a moving target, right? So even, even given the numbers we got on the fourth could potentially change before we actually get a, a final mill rate. Because those numbers could further be slightly revised. And I believe the difference and the concern here is that people say, you know, there's, people are hiding things. There's no clarity or there's no transparency here. And I don't think it's a, I don't think it was an intentional issue to try to hide numbers or not be transparent. It was just following existing procedures. But I believe the impact was something like a point 0014% on the revenue numbers, which is which is almost insignificant when you're just talking about a budget. They're very small numbers. So it wasn't that these large numbers that nobody knew about were being hidden. They're, they're, they're very, very small numbers. But in retrospect, obviously it will be better going forward and we should try to be more transparent to the extent that we can.
Thank you.
Just a couple of quick points. One. And I think like councillor Butler said, I'm certainly not including, you know, negative intentions by anything. I think all of us would want to have all of the same information. And so I think that's, that's, that was, that was frustrating to me. Not so much, you know, running figures with Lisa and that. So I think, I think it's fair for us all to want the same information. And to Joe's point, I understand that it, that that amount changes. And I appreciate that Lisa took the time now to try to provide the most accurate information. I just wish it had gone to all of us. And then the only other thing that I want to say is I do think it's important that we respectfully disagree when we disagree. You know, everyone here is volunteering and I do think that we're all doing what we think is the best interest of the town, even when we don't agree on those things. So.
Thank you. Anything else? I just gotta say, I think we all, that's what my agenda was, we all can do better. It's just reset. Now and take everything you learn. It's just the past. I got used to it last time. This council is different. That's right. So it's all, you know, bottom line is we can do better and we'll all learn.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number 15 on our agenda, which is public listed participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a three minute limit. We will go back and forth between the physical room and the virtual room. If you would like to speak, we ask you to come on up to the table and give us your name and address. If you're online and you'd like to speak, we ask you to raise your little zoom hand.
Okay, again, this is, I'm a plant. I succeed like a little colony in that again. Again, this is handwritten. So hold on to your seats again. I did, this is especially for the new members here. I'm about to say. This is about removing members from the historic district commission. I want to say to you in all honesty, this is not about procedure. This is not about attendance, decorum, or professionalism. I don't think that Ms. Katie and Mr. Foley are being properly honest with you. So it's about, to tell you the truth, it's about the Putin approach to an opposition opinion. You know how Putin is. You don't do what I say. You don't know what, you don't do what I think. You're erased. You're dismissed. You're gone. Kathy and Jody, protect the historic district as members of the historic district commission. They do their job with fairness and they do it with dedication. They're volunteers. I'll tell you right now, and you should get out of your cocoon, go into town, talk to people, get out of this circle that you're in. Do something different. Go out into the town and ask them. See what they think, really. It's about town manager and Ms. Katie. They hate the fact that the historic district commission and the three groups that are part of the they hate the fact that they decide that they don't want the cement sidewalk on the green. That's all there is to it. And and I'm pretty sure I'm 100% correct, pretty sure that they want to get rid of people who say no to the sidewalk in the historic district commission. And they want to put their yes men in it. The historic district commission is designed to protect the historic district. It's not designed to say yes to everybody or anything. And that's another matter. When you go up to run in the historic district, they may say, no, you can't do that. They're protecting the historic district. And people being people are not going to say, oh, okay. They're going to hate the person who said it. You have to take that into consideration. You know, it you talk about decorum and professionalism. Mr. Foley won't even talk to Kathy on a personal basis about matters that have nothing to do with the town green. It has to do with your building over there. The town owns the building. The his, the, where the historical society is. The town owns that, owns that buildings. There are a lot of problems with it. The ADA ramp needs fixing. The ramp in the back needs fixing. The steps in the front needs repair. You can't go up that ramp. They're, they need fixer and up when you don't remove the snow. You won't even talk to Kathy about it on a professional basis. But you're the manager. That's your job. So now I'm going to do, one of the people back here are going to give me their minutes. Oh, fine woman. Yeah, she's going to give me her minutes. So you talk about professional and doing your job. Yeah. We'll talk to Kathy about that building over there. Come on now. You don't need a lawyer. So they do their job. And, and you guys, the new guys, go out and talk to people out there. Because you sit right in here and all you do is listen to him and you listen to her. There are other people in town who'll take a walk, knock on doors. Find the truth. Okay? And, and that's all I have to say. They, they mainly because I can't read the rest. But you know what I'm saying? It's not about their behavior. It's about your behavior and your behavior. And you know it. Okay?
Thank you.
All right.
Is there anyone online who would like to say anything? You can raise your zoom hand or press star nine. Michelle?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Michelle Harold, 194 Sugar Hill Drive. I just want to say I did watch the meeting on Thursday for as long as I could and it was incredibly frustrating. And I believe that Katie, the chair, did a very good job of handling the situation that left a lot of town council members on a different footing. And she took the time to make sure everybody was on the same page. And then she went ahead and challenged the numbers being provided to them. And, you know, I think that that was very professional. And I think that if she had been a man, we might not be even discussing that she was challenging, you know, the numbers in a way that was unprofessional. I've worked with Katie on the, when she was chairing the Birch Grove Building Committee, and she is a fabulous chair. The way that she can get consensus and bring people around and the fact that somebody even mentions that maybe she shouldn't be chair is really a little bit saddening that we try to do this when we're trying to bring this town together and we're very divided. And so, yeah, that's all I got to say. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Sorry, anyone else? Come on.
My name is Dave Geisler, 238 Anderson Road. And I want to apologize for not being well organized the first time I spoke. I wasn't expecting to speak. But I do want to talk about professionalism because I was kind of surprised that this came up. I'm very disappointed in a lot of, lot of things. First of all, when I'm speaking, the town manager is sitting there smiling at me. And that was a little bit, I thought, uncalled for. When Sharon was speaking, you threw your hands up. Like that also I think is unprofessional. You're supposed to sit there and take it like a man. And quite honestly, Brian, as a Rockville High graduate, I expected a whole lot more out of you than, than reacting to public speaking. The town chair, I'm sorry, the chairperson, the first speaker was I thought right on the money. My two experiences with you before tonight, I found you to be very unprofessional. I was very surprised when you were talking about giving professional advice to
The historic district.
Yeah, the commission, but I'm thinking, well, the historic commission. And I, I just, I, I, and also the gentleman back here saying, don't smirk. Because that's what I found you doing in one of the two times that I had contact with you. I noticed you're not smiling through everything tonight as you, you did the other night. And the third thing I'm talking, and the third council person here is smiling and laughing and then yawning. And I thought that was very disrespectful also. So if we're talking about ethics of other people, I think we've got to take into consideration, maybe we ought to improve ourselves. So thank you.
Thank you. It looks like we have a number of people online. I'm sorry, I'm gonna hit my back. Is, do you know who's first? I'm sorry.
I assume they shoot it in order, so.
Talent resident? Okay. Thank you. So Talent resident, if you give us your name, please.
Sure, just be one second. I'm just trying to get my video.
I don't know if your video is going to work.
Oh, okay. No problem. So my name is Jennifer Cordier. I'm at 14 Austin Drive in Talent. And I just wanted to just make a few comments about the historical society. I'm a little disappointed or maybe more concerned more than anything else. Because I, I happen to know Jody quite well. And I know that she's a person that dedicates a lot of time and energy and a lot of her own resources to really protect the history and the historical aspects of our town, which is one of the reasons why myself and my family came to Talent because of its beauty. I I think Jody can be very aggressive when she's trying to defend something that she truly believes in. And I'm hoping that I'm hoping that that maybe we should relook at what the historical society is really all about, which is protecting our history. And once we start to tarnish our history, we'll have really nothing left. So I guess that, I guess what I'm really just trying to say is that you know, the people that preserve the history in our town are really important to our town and to our society as a whole. And that we really need to look at what the role of the historical society is and what they're supposed to be defending. So, you know, I'm not trying to cause any problems. I'm hoping to participate a little bit more. And I do like that you're very, in this meeting, I saw that you were all very respectful to each other. So I'm hoping that does continue. And, you know, that's, I guess that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in there?
It's me. Mary Pat Souzy, 111 Torrey Road. I am talking about this, the historic district dismissal. I had a friend of a friend text me and say Kathy was asked to resign. And I was like, what? So I'm, I'm here to ask the council some procedure questions. I'm not quite sure. I did miss the budget meeting and I'm glad I did now. But the budget, the process questions are, so you guys are going to do a resolution to and you're going to draft it. And that resolution is going to say what? Is it going to talk about why they're being asked to be withdrawn from the commission? Is that what the resolution is about?
It's a, this is your opportunity to give us comments. It's not a back and forth discussion.
Okay, okay. So my comments would be that I'm very interested in seeing all the evidence as to why. And, and the other reason why I, I want to talk about this is I'm the chair of PCC, so I better be careful, right? I want to just make sure that, you know, we all understand why this is moving forward this way. I think often about emails that I've gotten after events and, you know, I mean, the public is hard. We're all volunteers. You guys are all volunteers. It's hard. So if somebody doesn't display the perfect decorum in a meeting and they have probably an issue with somebody else, maybe it could get testy, but there's still a public servant of the town of Talent. And, you know, I feel very strongly about that as I feel strongly about all of you guys doing this. This is days, nights, weekends. We're working hard. We're all doing that. Kathy did that. Jody did that. All my other, all the other commissions and everybody I know, we all do that. So I, I really hope that we are careful about making a final decision that will set a precedent for any other commission or committee in this town. And I, I really, really urge you to think very carefully about what And I, I really, really urge you to think very carefully about what we're going to do here in the next public hearing or whatever. But I look forward to seeing you Thursday night.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, forward to this one.
Yep.
So next online is Claudette Morehouse.
Good evening, everybody. Claudette Morehouse, 89 Merlot Way. Colleen, I have to thank you for your words tonight on last Thursday's meeting. I watched it online, and it was horribly painful to watch. It was a filibuster meeting, and there was much disrespect to our finance director. And what's more is not one of you stood up and called a point of order to stop it. She might have had changed numbers, but if you relook at the, at the minutes in the video, she said she had all of this, and given the opportunity, she could have explained it to all of you, and she was just not given the chance. I'm, I'm just, you know, it's, you know, you, you call about decorum on, you know, the other boards that came on, on subject tonight, but then it happened for six hours, a six-hour meeting. And our finance director has worked hard for many years with this town. She's got many awards for the accomplishments of her work, and you buried her, totally buried her because of a few emails that really didn't have a lot of substance. And I think that, you know, people can improve. I, I totally believe that, and I hope that you all do. But I do want to thank you, Colleen, for your words and bringing this up. And I'm just wondering if this was an apology from the entire board to Lisa Hancock. I think she was humiliated in a public meeting, and she deserves an apology in a public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who'd like to speak?
Yes, Dennis Deegan, 679 Talon Stage Row. So much to say, and is it two or three minutes?
It's three minutes, right.
Three minutes, okay. There must be 100 things going through my head. First of all, I guess, I think as the wisdom of these two folks, three folks back here, two in particular that show their gray hair, and I don't, that, you know, the reality is, when you lead something, which all of you who are new here, if you haven't led, other things you'll find out. True leadership means you, you just don't agree with what people want. You do the right thing, okay? That's what leadership really is, doing the right thing. Not just saying yes to these people or whoever, because I empathize or sympathize with them, or this is the way I think too, or I don't like this person over here. The reality is, I've been following what's going on with the Historic Commission for several years. And the reality is, the chair of this committee, council, is, has had it in for members of that committee from day one. She has done nothing to support what goes on there, nothing at all, for any and every reason. And quite honestly, Mr. Foley has been taking the same approach since he came on board to attack and do everything possible against members of that commission. It's actually deplorable, absolutely deplorable. The other comment I think is important is that all of you own whatever happens here, okay? All of you. You live in this town, I presume, because you're on the council here, okay? You own this. Your name, your reputation, your family's name and reputation, you own all of it, okay? So when you agree with a couple of folks in here, who quite honestly, I agree, Mr. Foley, the culture has to change, and it begins right here, nowhere else, okay? And there's a couple of members here who really are toxic in how they approach things, okay? Really true, okay? I don't know who in here is actually involved in corporate life, all right? But when you get into a number of different corporations and you run corporations, you can spot it right out. It just jumps right out at your behavior, and a lot of it has to do with body language, okay? Some of us can read body language like, like reading a book, okay, in how people behave. And quite honestly, there's, there's really cultural change that really needs, needs to take place here. The other thing I'm going to ask, I don't, I didn't have a chance to check out and see what members are on the Ethics Commission on this board, okay? On this, excuse me, this council. But I've read through that because I'm finishing up with my fact finding, but it looks like I'm going to be submitting an ethics complaint to the council and probably to the Ethics Commission, okay? However, there's one thing that I think either the council, and how, how this takes place, but the ethics code here says pursuant to Connecticut, 30 seconds, please. Connecticut General Statute, there shall be an ethics commission for the town of Talon, which shall investigate allegations of conduct prescribed, prescribed by this chapter, corrupting influence, illegal activities levied against any official or employee of the town, and shall have the power to be forward, da, 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 da. Okay, what's missing here is retaliation, okay? In behavior against residents of the town and/or the town at large, okay? That's missing here. I don't know whether it's somewhere else, okay? In all likelihood, I'm going to be submitting something to this commission, okay, about that. And depending upon how the commission handles it, if they reject it, I'm going to turn it over to the town council. If they reject it, as it says here from a whistleblower standpoint, I'm probably going to end up going to the Office of Attorney General, okay? Just so you know, all right? Again, I'll get that in writing when I have all my facts together. But quite honestly, there's some very bad behavior that goes on here, and it really needs to change because this town deserves better. And at the same time, I look around these new members, quite honestly, my read on, on a number of you, if not all of you, is you're really trying to do the right thing, okay? I read that in people. But there's some stuff going on here that's very bad behavior. And I don't know whether all of you know what took place behind the scenes that isn't proper, where someone in here had another member of a number of commission, another commission called the two members that they're trying to get rid of and told them to resign before tonight, okay? That's what happened. Do all of you know that? Hopefully, all of you do. All of you know the games that are being played here. Because your name, your reputation is on the line, whether you know it or not. Thank you very much.
The person marked iPhone, if you could just give us your name to start with, please.
Hello, Liz Caster, 54 Jesilean. First of all, I'd like to thank all the board members, the council members, for your time and effort. The fact that somebody's yawning, smiling, laughing, I can imagine. I was up really late last night. I'm yawning, laughing at watching UConn right now. So again, I want to thank you. Relative to Lisa and Colleen's scenarios and things, I do think it was completely inappropriate that Lisa did not send it out. And it was only inappropriate because Colleen was referring to those scenarios. Now, how could anybody that's sitting, whether it's Joe or Colleen or whoever, Jacob, understand those scenarios if Colleen did them with Lisa? It doesn't make sense to refer to them. If, if Colleen had done them independently, I would have no problem just to understand what would happen. But once you start referring to the scenarios, it's imperative that all members of the board have it. I do want to congratulate you on the decorum tonight is far better overall. There was fighting going back and forth between everyone last week. And knowing all of you, it's not your personalities to fight. It's just not your personalities to fight. I don't know everybody, but I do know most of you to fight. And I, I do appreciate the decorum tonight. Then back to the Historic Commission and Historical Society. I want to make sure that people understand they're two different things. One is a paid society that, you know, you donate money to, and one is not. It's a named commission for the town of Talon. I do think there was some inappropriate behavior. But again, I don't think, I do, I do have to say, I rethought some after Brian spoke about the culture. I do think there's a pretty tenuous culture on that commission. However, I do believe people should have the opportunity to improve with council. And maybe this is an opportunity to provide counsel to those members, and quite candidly, all the members. Because it's, there's at least one other member that has pretty inappropriate behavior, in my opinion, seeing four or five meetings recently over the last four or five months. So I just want to say thank you to all of you. I do think it's appropriate that you perhaps provide counsel to those two members and allow them to continue, however, with kind of guy at the stick guidelines on how they should be handled themselves. Again, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who'd like to speak? We have more people online. Heather M.
Hi, Heather McCann, 62 Crosson Drive. I just wanted to say number one, thank you to all the counselors. I, I feel bad for Katie and Brian when you guys are taking a beating tonight. And it really is not totally justified. I was one of the members of the community who hung in there with you last meeting, and I was there till 1:00 AM along with you. And it wasn't a pretty meeting. It wasn't. Some of the counselors were caught off guard. They realized that they didn't have the same information that everybody else had. And the chair had to work, tried to quickly regroup and work within those, within that realization that she did not have the same information, so recess was requested. She came back. She found out she still didn't have, she found out there was even more information she didn't have. She did an excellent job of still maintaining and running the meeting after that. And, you know, by the end of it, seemed to, everybody seemed to be doing okay by the end of it. But I do want to say that that is very atypical for her. That was, for her to be flustered like that, that was a one-time thing. She's an incredibly intelligent person. And having been in the room during recess, if you could hear the snide remarks that some of the other counselors were making, even ones who are coming across right now as being very, acting as if, you know, they always say and do the right thing. If you could have been a fly on the wall, I sure was. And, you know, people shouldn't throw stones. That is all. Thank you again for all you're doing. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who'd like to speak? If you can back online, Susan Morse.
Hi there. Good night, or good evening, late night. As late as you guys have had lately, but thank you for listening. I, I just wanted to try and say something positive in regards to the town council, current town council, and communication with, with the, with the public. I mean, I've, again, I think you've all taken a beating tonight, and I personally have, I want to speak about your, each one of you and the experience that I've had. By, before the even election, I reached out to everyone who was running and asked them to answer a few questions about what they thought about accessibility in town. I heard from every single one of the people who are up on that town council before us tonight. And I appreciate that more than anything. I mean, and that says a lot. So it says a lot in the face of everything that you've heard, that you don't talk to the people, that you don't hear, or you don't listen, or whatever else. You're all doing a great job, and thank you very much. It's, it's tough. These are late nights and emotional, and I can't even imagine. Keep it up. Don't let it get to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, Susan, before you go, could you give us your name and address?
So sorry.
It's okay.
So late. Susan Lusa Hughes, 95 Talon Green. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Want to say anything? Well, yeah, it's just me and Susan again.
I'm disheveled today. I just crawled out of three days in a sleeping bag in northern New Hampshire. My apologies. I'm, I'm also gratified to hear a much improved meeting tonight.
Before you start, just give us your name and address for the record.
90 Road Road. I'm sorry. That's how disheveled I am. So it's a much improved meeting tonight. I'm, I'm glad to hear it. But it was truly unfortunate that during the council meeting on April 4th, the financial information spreadsheet showing various budget scenarios were provided to certain council members and then not provided to other council members, including the chairperson. According to the discussion at the meeting, this information was provided in response to email requests and/or in-person conversations with staff. In 28 years of serving on various boards and commissions, charged with making fact-based decisions, and in almost 40 years of participating in the town budget process, I've honestly never witnessed anything like this before. In fact, just a few weeks ago, the town staff emphasized to the chair and the vice chair of the building subcommittee that all questions pertaining to the fire station construction budget needed to be submitted far enough in advance so that all building commission members could receive both the questions and the answers from staff and have ample time to evaluate the information before voting on actions related to said budget. So this stands in contrast to what appears to be the provision of information only to select town counselors while withholding the same information from others. Minimizing the importance of the information doesn't change the seriousness of the actions. It's a lapse of protocol. As a professional that works with budgets and the many millions of dollars, I can say that in no professional scenario I've ever been associated with, would this action be tolerated. Setting the town budget is arguably the most important responsibility of the town council. Its impact on the citizenry is unparalleled. Making sure that all counselors are examining and considering the same data set and budgetary details and scenarios is paramount, no matter how minimal we think they are. And it goes to accuracy and decision-making. But most importantly, it goes to honesty and transparency and professional conduct and working together for the benefit of the town. I think you made, I think Councilor Buckler made a very good point. And we all know better, and we all must do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online who would like to speak? Can raise your Zoom hand or press star nine. Anyone else in the audience tonight? Anyone else online? Seeing no one else, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is adjournments. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So we, I'm ready for adjournment.
Move by Jacob and I through three, second by Soto. Is there objection to adjournment? Is there objection? Without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.